Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us this week for our City Council Business Meeting. Here to start us with an invocation is Pastor Gene Shelburne. Gene?
Let's pray together. You do your best, Lord, to keep us from being bored. You send us December coal fronts in September. You send us record-breaking drought in what usually is our wettest month. Here in the Panhandle, we seldom get bored. But today could be an exception, Lord, because even you will be tempted to say ho-hum if you have to listen while we read all the repetitious gobbledygook in today's agenda, setting for over and over again the same legal parameters for property assessments for city maintenance in subdivision after subdivision. I think you will agree, Lord, that boring is the nice word to describe that section of today's meeting. While it bores most of us, Lord, still we give you thanks for city officials and staff who pay proper attention to stuff like that to keep our city legal and to keep our neighborhoods safe and accessible. Guide all who participate in this meeting, Lord, that our words may be gracious and our decisions wise and help us to stay awake during the property assessment segments soon to follow. We offer this prayer through your son, who could even sleep through a storm. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Gene. Thank you for being with us today.
Always glad to.
At this time, we'll move to the public address portion of our meeting. Frances, Stephanie, I'm not aware of anyone who's signed up for public address, but maybe somebody has last minute.
Mayor, we do have an individual that signed up, Mr. James Skank.
Okay, wonderful.
Would you like to say anything before I unmute him?
No, I'll just remind him he has three minutes, and it needs to relate to something on the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Skank, you were able to talk at this time. Mr. Skank, I don't know if you can hear me. I show that you're muted, and it's not letting me unmute you.
Star six. Am I unmuted now?
There we go. We can hear you, sir.
You can? Why is that? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello? Okay. You know, I can't imagine anybody, at least technology-wise, that could keep up with getting in to talk to y'all. Here we go. Okay, I want to speak on item 11 in the consent agenda, non-consent agenda, and, or L, I mean. It appears that the Thompson Park pool has come down from an 8.1 million to a $6.3 million cost. I guess that's what I'm reading in that, and I would like for y'all to speak to it maybe here later in the, in your program, because please explain, I mean, and then are we actually gonna lower that little less than half a cent property tax you put on us to get the 8.1 million down to what it would take to get 6.3 million? That's what I'm interpreting in there. The next thing I want to talk about is how we're buying up more empty warehouses downtown. Drove by these ones that we're talking about on Johnson and on Grant, paying $4.7 million that you're authorizing our city manager to possibly do today if you vote on it. The first question would be, where did the money come from? The second would be, why are we purchasing all of this now at a time when, when the city is struggling, and then where did the money come from? We just got through purchasing GDS, Grand Data, for 3 million plus. Then those other two lowly appraised buildings for $700,000 and another $600,000, 4.2 million there. So we've bought about $9 million in warehouse property downtown. Now, I realize there's some possible expansion in our future, but it seems like we're trying to do it all right now. Right now, at a time when your, the budgets are struggling, the sales taxes are down, even though they've come up a little, we're spending money on empty buildings that we may have future use for, because I feel that's where you're gonna lean toward as far as explaining the purpose of. It seems like you should talk to citizens a little bit more about those kind of needs. And that's, that was my point today. Where'd the money come from? Maybe you'll speak to it when you get down there. And why are we doing it all right now at this time? So.
Thank you, Mr. Skank.
Three minutes are up.
They are. That's exactly three minutes. Good job.
Was it really? Well, listen, it's raining outside. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Bye-bye. Okay, we'll move on to item 1A on the agenda. And I will say right up front, we are time-sensitive today because we have our budget meeting that we need to do in person at the Grand Plaza, and it starts at 4 o'clock. And the reason that we were partially on Zoom today and partially in person is because budget is required to be in person. The governor did not suspend that portion of the meeting-in-person laws. But we, by the time we were getting to the point of scheduling that, we had already scheduled this one and put on notice some of the items in this agenda would be a Zoom meeting. So we're conducting the meeting, the regular business meeting by Zoom. The budget portion will be at the Grand Plaza, at the Civic Center, at 4 o'clock. So we do have that timeframe, and I have us, I'll keep reminding us to be mindful of it. We have plenty of time to do our meeting, but we'll stay on track and be mindful of that time. So anything in the agenda packet that you have questions or need further review on? Okay, so we'll move to item 1B, which is a coronavirus update.
Right. For a very brief presentation, we have Casey Stotan, Director of Public Health. Casey?
Yes, good afternoon. I'm glad to be here today. So as of today, there are a total of 6,535 cases of COVID-19 reported in Potter and Randall Counties, 4,194 in Potter County, 2,341 in Randall County. We have a total of 5,862 recoveries and an increase to 89 deaths reported in our community. That leaves us with a total of 583 active cases. Each of the cases do represent a unique individual. Hospital capacity remains steady with 40 patients hospitalized for a rate of 8.4%. Total adult bed utilization is at 72%, ICU utilization is at 79%, and total ventilator use utilization is at 30%. The public health drive-through does remain operational. Individuals can call 806-378-6300 to be screened and directed to the test site. As we can continue to see an increase in positive cases, we just want to remind our community that prevention is key. Masks, staying home if you're sick, that social distance of at least six feet or more, and good hand washing are critical even in this time. So we look forward to when there's a time when there's a COVID vaccine, and also want to highlight the need for the flu vaccine this year. And that's all I have today.
Casey, I just want to say, if a citizen's never gotten a flu vaccine before, they don't go through a local pharmacy, they can get them at the health department. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. We don't, we don't currently have our supply, hasn't shipped our supply yet. So I will let council and our Wednesday press conference know as soon as we have that supply available. But we will have flu vaccine for the public, for both adults and children, as soon as we have our supply.
And any citizen can get vaccination of any kind at the health department, right? And they can schedule that at 378-6300?
Yes, ma'am. We do have vaccines for both children and adults. The full menu of vaccine and that same phone number, 378-6300, is how to schedule an appointment.
Thank you. Any questions for Casey, council?
No, Mayor, but I did want to add a couple of other topics of conversation around COVID-19.
Sure.
Just continuing kind of our conversation we've had the last couple of weeks and just looking at data as we're reopening schools and information across the country. And the, I wanted to highlight, there was a report towards the end of last week that had 17 of the large universities, University of Alabama, Georgia, Kentucky, Oklahoma, Minnesota, just a lot of the large universities. And out of 17 universities, there were 11,000 new cases reported of COVID. And, but out of that 11,000 new cases, there were zero hospitalizations. And so just following up on just, you know, what we've seen, not just nationally but internationally, just the data on susceptibility of young people is that we are mirroring what we, what we've seen otherwise. And certainly, young people are not immune to this disease, but they have a great resiliency physically to have that many, such a large increase in still-stable hospitalizations. And I just wanted to also add into the conversation a report from the CDC at the end of last week that just, just the mental toll that this has taken on the 18- to 24-year-olds, that a fourth of those between ages 18 and 24 have considered suicide this year due to the pandemic, and that was a June survey by the CDC. The CDC also found that the prevalence of anxiety disorders was three times higher for young Americans in the second quarter than they were the second quarter of 2019. So just the prevalence of depression was roughly four times higher. So just as we talk about the different layers and dynamics involved with this, you know, I think that there, there are other things that we have to continue take into the overall picture. And when I look at, you know, some of this information, it does move me more towards the position of that we, as an economy, need to be open. Our country needs to be open, the state of Texas, the city of Amarillo needs to be open. And I'm hopeful that we are going to soon be in that position to be able to be moving towards that.
Thank you. Anything else for Casey? Okay.
I would like to just mention very quickly that we crisply understand and are working with the different mental health organizations. And so we'll be working with our communications team on billboards for specifically suicide awareness, but with mental health issues. Canyon ISD has bracelets they're handing out to students to talk about some of those very same issues. And so there's good work being done in these arenas to, to talk to kids, to talk to adults, to make sure that the, these pieces are touched on, because it's very, very important.
Thank you, Casey. I'm very glad you added that in. Jared, anything else on this item?
Barring any further questions or comments from council, that's all we have.
So the only question I have for you, Mayor, is have you heard from the governor? He said he was gonna make an announcement after the Labor Day holiday. Have you any information as to when you've heard he might be making that?
No, I heard last night that he was going back and forth on what he should be doing. Like, should he be reopening? Should, how, how should he be changing things? West Texas mayors are scheduling a phone call with him, a Zoom call actually, and hope to have that in the next seven days. So that's the update on communicating with the governor. And obviously, we're still operating under his orders. We're enforcing his, he's the one who's opening or not opening us, and by law, we are bound to obey those orders and to execute them. So the conversation with him about where we are as a city and what we think we're ready for is in the works, and I'll keep y'all posted as soon as I've had it.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mr. City Manager, have we received any updates from the statewide task force? I know that Mark Vivens, I believe, was our point, was not necessarily our appointment, but an individual appointed from our area. Do we know if they are continuing to meet or if there have been any recommendations from that task force to the governor?
Well, they, it's the task force on reopening Texas, so I don't, I have not, I don't understand that they've been, I've not heard that they've been shut down, so I, I don't have any information that says they've been shut down. But neither have I heard anything from them in the last couple of months.
Yeah, I, my last piece of information about it was that they were slowing down as far as their meetings. So I don't believe they're still, you know, doing their weekly meetings that they were doing all through last spring and this summer. Anything else, Jared, on this?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Let's move on then and do item 1C, which is request future agenda items or reports from the city manager. Anything from a council member? Any requests there?
No, ma'am.
Okay, great. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Anything there that needs to come off for further discussion or questions? Okay, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve the items on the consent agenda. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. I see five. That passes with a 5-0 vote. Onto the non-consent items. Item 3A, this here is a series of our public improvement districts. And we have to do this every year, look at their budgets, approve this. So we'll, we've got nine of them. We'll try to go as quickly as possible. And Jared, I'll hand it to you.
Yes, ma'am. Y'all, as you said, you'll remember last year and the year before where Kelly Shaw moved very quickly through the presentations. We're gonna have a single slide for each one of our PIDs. He's gonna give you the details and answer any questions council has. We'll have to take each one of them individually with action after each one. So with that said, Kelly, take it away.
Thank you, Jared. Good afternoon, council. Might also mention that they're all public hearings as well, so I don't recall ever being prayed for, but I promise I'll be, I'll give as much information as needed, but as brief as possible, I promise. So with that, I think Stephanie was gonna bring up, but I wanted to give just a brief reminder that you can fund PIDs. PIDs can fund many different things, but basically what we use them for here in Amarillo is for some of our subdivisions to install improvements that are above normal city services. So they put in additional landscape, lighting, and entryway features, fountains, those kinds of things. So I just wanted to remind everybody basically what we use them here in Amarillo for. As far as our first public improvement district to go over, which would be the non-consent agenda item A, is for Heritage Hills. Heritage Hills assessments are based on .08, so eight cents multiplied by your lot square footage. There was no change in assessments this year. Total assessments came to $404,204. And total expenses for the 2021 year are projected to be $92,676. Did want to let you know that the board majority recommended approval of the budget, and we have at this time had no property owner comments based on the notices that were sent out. So I'm not sure how, that's it for the Heritage Hills. Did we do a public hearing for each?
Yes. So do y'all have any questions for Kelly about that information? Okay, if not, then I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing on this matter. Anyone that wants to speak for, on, or against the Heritage Hills PID budget, now's the time. So Stephanie, you want them to push the raise your hand button, or?
Yes, if you will push the raise hand button, or if you're calling from a telephone, press star nine at this time. I do not see anybody that's looking to talk on this item, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll close the public hearing on the Heritage Hills PID and entertain a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7873 within the Heritage Hills Public Improvement District to maintain the property owner assessment rates of 0.08 per square foot. This is to cover, I'm sorry, in the amount of $404,204 to cover all operating costs as well as build up an operating reserve. In addition to that, also to approve the service plan covering a period of at least five years.
Second.
And then by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve item 3A. Any further questions or discussions from the council? Okay, all of those in favor, please raise your hand.
Okay. Mayor, I don't know if you can see me or not, but this is Frida. I approve.
Okay, I can see you, Frida. So we've got a 5-0 vote on that one. It will pass. Item 3B is a public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 7874 with regard to Town Square Public Improvement District. Mr. City Manager? Actually, you want me just to hand them to Kelly every time, Jared, or do you want?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Through the PIDs, I think that'd be best.
Okay, great. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. The Town Square Public Improvement District, their assessment rate is based, again, off of the lot square footage multiplied by an assessment rate for the 2021 year, it would be point, will be 0.111, so the lower 11 cents per square foot. This is, this doesn't change from last year. It remains the same. And it will create total assessments equalling $166,164. Total expenses for the annual budget are projected to be $83,175. This, again, was recommended by the Town Square PID Advisory Board. At the time of this meeting, we've received no property owner comments regarding this item.
Any questions for Kelly about this information? Okay, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against the Town Square PID assessment or budget, I'm sorry, this is just the assessment, may now raise their hand or hit star nine on their phone to get our call host's attention.
We do not have anybody showing interest to speak on this item.
Thank you, Stephanie. We will close the public hearing on this matter and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7874 within the Town Square Public Improvement District to maintain the property owner assessment rate of 0.1111 per square foot in the amount of $166,164 to cover all operating costs as well as build up an operating reserve. In addition to the approving the service plan, which will cover a period of at least five years.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve item 3B. Any further questions or discussion from the council? See, none. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. I see five hands. That passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3C, Kelly?
Thank you. Item, this item is the Point West Public Improvement District's 2021 assessment budget. The assessment method for this particular PID is to divide the total cost between property owners according to the percent, their percentage of property that they own within the entire PID. So there is no change, again, in this assessment method or assessment with total assessments equalling $52,007, and the total expenses are projected to be $53,626. You might note that's a little higher than the total assessment, but they have adequate coverage in their fund surplus, so that's not a problem. Is, this item was also, or this budget was also recommended by the Point West Advisory Board. And at this time, I have, I've not received any comments from any property owner based on the notice that was sent out.
Hey, any questions for Kelly? At this time, we'll open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against the assessment for Point West PID can now hit star nine or the raise your hand button on Zoom.
We do not have anybody signaling that they wish to speak on this.
Okay. At this time, we'll close the public hearing on this matter and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7875 within the Point West Public Improvement District for no assessment increase for the 2020, 2021 budget and service plan, and for the current assessment to remain the same, which is in the amount of $52,007. Also to approve the service plan, which will cover at least a five-year period.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve the specifics listed in item 3C with regard to ordinance number 7875. Any questions or discussion from the council about the motion? Okay, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. I see five. That passes with a 5-0 vote. Moving on to item 3D, public hearing in consideration of ordinance number 7876. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. This is regarding the Vineyards Public Improvement District. The assessment method is a flat rate, which is $50 per lot. There is no assessment increase for the fiscal year 2021. Total assessments given that rate would equal $10,450. Total expenses are projected to be $10,214. It was recommended by the board for approval, and at this time, we have had no comments from property owners.
Any questions for Kelly, council?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor. Kelly, you said that the total assessment would be $10,214. Did I hear that correctly, instead of $10,450?
I'm sorry, if I did say that, the total assessment equals $10,450 with total expenses being projected at $10,214.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that clarification, Frida.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at this time, then, we will open a public hearing on the Vineyards PID. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this matter should hit star nine on their phone, or if they're a member of the Zoom, if you're online with the Zoom call, you can hit the raise your hand button.
We do not have anybody wishing to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie. We'll close the public hearing on this matter and entertain a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 7876 within the Vineyards Public Improvement District to keep the property owner assessment rate at $50 per lot for a total of, for the assessment totaling $10,450. Also to approve the service plan, which will cover a period of at least five years.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve ordinance number 7876 with the specifications made in the motion. Any further questions or discussion of the motion? All of those in favor, please raise your hand. I see five. That passes with a 5-0 vote. Item 3E, in reference to ordinance number 7877. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is regarding the Quell Creek Improvement District. The assessment method for this PID is a flat rate of $350 per lot. This has not changed from last year. last year. The assessment would, total assessments, equalling $10,150. Expenses are projected to be $10,836. Again, the expenses are a little over the total assessment rate, but again, there is adequate coverage in the surplus funds to cover that. This was recommended by the Quail Creek Pid Advisory Board. As far as questions from property owners, I did have one property owner contact me, Mrs. Fanti, who lives there, and she requested expense information for the last couple of years, which I put together and sent to her and advised her. If she had any further questions, I'd be happy to talk to her about it. But other than that, that was the only comment that we've received at this time.
Thank you, Kelly. Council, do you have any questions about the Quail Creek assessment or expenses?
Mayor, I might just have Kelly comment on, this is a good opportunity, and just the two differences, 350 per lot versus the previous in the Vineyards, $50 per lot. For citizens who might be watching and go, why are those different? And how is that determined? And Kelly, if you don't mind to address that, how these rates are determined, whether it's per square foot, a flat fee, et cetera?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Starting with the petitions that are required to create a Pid, there are certain requirements that, there's only a certain amount of assessment methods that you can use. One of those is a flat rate and be a per square footage assessment method, and so depending on how the petition states, they want the assessment method to occur, that's how it comes to be. You are correct that this Pid, Quail Creek, and the previous Pid, they use the same assessment method. However, due to this, you know, it could be due to the amount of public improvements that are put in, the amount of maintenance required to keep those up can differ. So Quail Creek's assessment is a little bit higher than the Vineyard's because basically there's a little more maintenance required, but it's up to the developer when that started is what the assessment rate is chosen, but the method is set by the petition. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on the Quail Creek Pid, both the assessment and the expenses for the year. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this item should now press star nine on their phone, or they can raise their hand on the Zoom call.
We do not have anybody wishing to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing on this item and entertain a motion.
Yes, Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7877 within the Quail Creek Public Improvement District to keep the property owner assessment rate at $350 per lot for a total assessment of $10,150 along with the service plan covering a five-year period.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Sauer. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. That's a 5-0 vote, and it will pass. Item 3F, ordinance number 7878 on the Tutbury Public Improvement District. Kelly?
Mayor, this is the Tutbury Public Improvement District. They had, their assessment method is again a flat rate per lot. This year's assessment is $679 per lot. This has been the same for several years. This assessment would total $16,296. Projected expenses are $20,516. Again, this expense is over the total assessment revenue, but they have adequate reserve funds to cover those costs, and basically it's for the replacement of some lighting that's within that Pid. This budget and assessment rate was recommended by the Tutbury Advisor, Advisory Board, and at this time, we've received no comments from property owners.
Any questions for Kelly about the Tutbury Pid? Okay, hearing none, we'll open a public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against the Tutbury Pid assessment or expenses may do so by pressing star nine on your phone or clicking the raise your hand button on the Zoom call.
Mayor, we do not have anybody wishing to speak at this time.
Thank you, Stephanie. We'll close the public hearing on this item and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7878 within the Tutbury Public Improvement District to keep the property owner assessment rate at $679 per lot for total assessment of $16,296, and also to approve the service plan, which will cover at least a five-year period.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve item 3F, which is ordinance number 7878 for the Tutbury Public Improvement District. Any questions or further discussion on the motion? Okay, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. That passes with the 5-0 vote. Item 3G is a, with regard to ordinance number 7879 and the Colonies Public Improvement District. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is, regards the Colonies Public Improvement District. The assessment method for this particular Pid is again a rate multiplied by the square footage of the lot. The rate for the 2021 assessment would be 0.10, so 10 cents per square foot. This is not changing from last year's assessment rate. Total assessments are, would be $1,030,841. Total expenses are projected to be $988,337. This budget and five-year service plan is recommended by the Colonies Pid Advisory Board. We did have two, I'm sorry, we had one comment from a property owner, Ms. Rush. She requested that the board consider capping the assessment amount. Did bring that up with the board, and the board felt that the assessment was equitable based on a rate times the square footage of the lot, and if we capped it, or if the board recommended to cap it, that it would only apply to certain larger lots, and so that they felt it would be actually inequitable. So they wanted to keep the assessment method rate the same. Other than that, I have not received any other comments.
Okay, any questions for Kelly, council? Okay, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on the Colonies Pid. If you have any, you may speak on, for, or against this item with regard to its assessments and its total expenses. You may do so by pushing star nine if you're on just the phone, or if you're watching us on a Zoom call, you can hit the raise your hand button.
Mayor, we do not have anybody wishing to speak at this time.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'll close the public hearing on the Pid, Colonies Pid, and entertain a motion on item 3G.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7879 within the Colonies Public Improvement District to maintain the property owner assessment rate at $0.10 dollars per square foot for a total, for assessment totaling $1,030,841,000. Also, the additional 606, I'm sorry, $66,830 annual debt service payment and the five-year service plan.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Any further questions or further discussion on that motion? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, great. We have a 5-0 vote on that, and it will pass with the 5-0 vote. Item 3H is consideration of ordinance number 7880 with regard to the Greenways Public Improvement District. Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is regarding the Greenways Public Improvement District. Their assessment method is based on a per lot rate, which is a little different than all of our other Pids. It's based on what type of lot you own. With the fiscal year 2021 assessment rates, they are, the board is recommending for a B lot, an assessment of $625. For an A lot, which is 120% of a B lot's assessment, the, the $750, and a D lot, which is 120% of assessment, that lot, that assessment, $900, and then the commercial assessment rate would be $1,000 per acre. So basically, all the assessments are based, besides commercial, are based off of that B lot assessment. The $625 assessment is $25 higher than last year's assessment. Given these assessment rates, the total assessments are being projected to be $671,000, or $671,219. Total expenses are projected to be $705,283. I did want to mention that the board also approved in the annual budget a possible, a possible developer reimbursement to $1 million. As I mentioned, the board did approve or recommend approval of the assessment rates I just went over. As far as property owner comments, I have a couple. I had one that requested exemption for veterans, and speaking with our legal department and looking at state statute, I don't think that that can legally be done. Also had a property owner request that we take a look at better managing the irrigation systems, that they see some sprinklers going, you know, after rains, and that he would like for the, the Pid Board and the maintenance contractor to make sure that we're using our water as efficient, as efficiently as possible, and therefore not having to increase any, any expenses for that water, and told him that we would, we would look at that. Other than that, those are the only comments that I received.
Kelly, what will y'all do to look at that about the water concern?
We, the, the advisory board actually had that as an agenda item on their agenda the last time they met, and it's a concern with all the Pids. The water expenses are are significant for all of our Pids, and for the Greenways specifically, they are getting with their contractor, and they are walking through, making sure the rain sensors are working properly and those kinds of things. So basically, it, it falls on the maintenance contractor to, to check on those things, which the board has asked him to do.
Any other questions for Kelly, council?
No. Kelly, in regards to the expenses, I thought I heard $705,283?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it, so it's not a million? It's not a million, $705,283?
Well, the million, the $1,705,283 includes that possible developer reimbursement of up to 1 million. The actual, the actual operation and maintenance expenses totaled $705,283.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? At this time, we'll open a public hearing on this matter. Anyone who wants to speak for, on, or against the Greenways Pid, both the assessment and the expenses for the upcoming year, can hit star nine on their phone or click the raise your hand button on the Zoom call.
We don't have anybody wishing to speak at this time.
Okay, we will close the public hearing on this matter and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7880 within the Greenways Public Improvement District to maintain the property owner assessment rate at $750 for type A lot, $625 for type B lot, $900 for type D lot, and $1,875 per acre for commercial property for total of $671,219 along with a five-year service plan.
Okay.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Sauer to approve ordinance number 7880. Any further questions or discussions about the motion? Okay, hearing nothing. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. I see five hands, so that item will pass with the 5-0 vote. We're getting close, folks. Two left. So Kelly, with regard to ordinance number 7881 on the Pinnacle Improvement District, take it away.
Okay, I, I hope we only have one left, but.
Oh, you're right. We do only have one left. I counted wrong. Thank you.
So I'm sure you're happy with that, but this item is regarding our Pinnacle District. The assessment method for this public improvement district is again a rate multiplied by the square footage of your lot. The rate being recommended for this fiscal year 2021 is 0.07, so seven cents per square foot of your lot. This is actually the first year that the Pinnacle Pid has had assessments, and with that rate, the total assessments are being projected at $85,823, with a total expenses of $54,039. This came, this rate is, and budget is recommended by the Pinnacle Advisory Board, and at this time, we've received no comments from any property owners that were noticed.
Any further questions for Kelly from the council? Okay, at this time, we'll open a public hearing on the assessment and expenses for the Pinnacle Pid. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against those items may now hit star nine on their phone or click the raise your hand button on the Zoom call.
There is not anyone wishing to speak at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing on this item and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7881 within the Pinnacle Public Improvement District to approve the property owner assessment rate at $0.07 dollars per square foot for assessment totaling $85,823 along with the five-year service plan.
Second.
It's been a motion made by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve ordinance number 7881. Any further questions or discussion on the motion, council? Okay, hearing none. All of those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, I see five hands, so that will pass with the 5-0 vote. Kelly, thank you very much for the work that you do interfacing with our community on these Pids, and you did an excellent job of summarizing that information and doing the presentations very efficiently. Thank you for that.
Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Okay, moving on to item J. Considering the Beacon Point Annexation. Mr. City Manager?
I think, Mayor, we've heard this, or we've touched on Beacon Point, go ahead and presentation to council. We also discussed annexation in a much broader sense last week during the discussion item. This is to consider on first reading, ordinance annexing the area into the city. So I'm going to have Andrew Freeman, our Managing Director for Planning and Development Services, go ahead and give you the presentation. go ahead and give you the presentation, and then we'll take any questions from council.
Sir, so yes, today is the public hearing and first reading on the action taken a couple of weeks ago where the city council approved calling the public hearing and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreed service plan that was provided and discussed. So just a little background information on the project. It is being requested by the landowner because of their plans to develop the Beacon Points subdivision. So they're requesting municipal services to allow that subdivision to be developed. It's 327 acres, which would be approximately 1,632 residential lots and 31 acres of land for non-residential uses along the corners, with the anticipated build-out period of 10 years. The agreed service plan, as we discussed, per state law, has been prepared. So what this lays out is what the responsibilities are for the city as well as the landowner if the property was to be annexed, and this was included in your packet. Here's the layout of the preliminary plan that shows the 12 units of the residential lots, as well as the corners for the non-residential uses. And then on the right is an aerial zoomed in on the site. You can see it just south of the Pinnacle subdivision. Here's a zoomed out aerial of the surrounding land, just to give you a little bit more perspective with Interstate 27 on the west and then Hollywood Road further up to the north, Route 335. As far as the annexation purpose and criteria, these are the things we look for when reviewing these requests in the ETJ to provide protect areas for future growth and development, promoting orderly growth and logical land development patterns by facilitating long-range planning for development and provisions of municipal services. The Belt Etoile Plies subdivision land use regulation, as well as maintenance standards, fire and construction codes, and environmental regulations. Some of these are only required in the city limits, so that has one perk to it, being annexed into the city. And it's also to diversify the city's economic base and create job opportunities, as well as residential opportunities by annexing additional land for development. And then, as we discussed last meeting a couple of weeks ago, some of the criteria we use to evaluate these are, is it existing or planned development? The need to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Service needs of the areas proposed for annexation, what would be required, as well as the fiscal impact of the development and the impacts it has as far as the city's tax base and what's expected to be required. The fiscal impact was included in your packet, in case you have any questions on that. But today, we do have a public hearing for anyone that wants to speak for or against the item. And I'm also available to answer any more detailed questions you might have for the request.
Council, do you have any questions for Andrew before we move into the public hearing? I lost a lane. Sometimes when those boxes shift, there she is, okay. Anybody? Okay, at this time, then, we will open a public hearing on item 3J in regard to ordinance number 7882. Anyone who wishes to speak for, on, or against this matter may do so by pushing star nine on their phone or clicking the Raise Your Hand option if you're on the Zoom call. Stephanie, do we have anybody?
I'm giving it about 15 seconds, Mayor, just to verify.
Sure.
It does not look like we have anybody that wishes to speak on this item.
Okay, then. We'll close the public hearing on this matter and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number 7882 to consider the Beacon Point Annexation in the vicinity of Western Street and West Sundown Lane.
Okay.
It's been moved by Councilmember Powell, seconded by Councilmember Sauer, to approve ordinance number 7882. Any further discussion or questions on the motion from the council?
Mayor, I had one follow-up question for Andrew, just related to land use in an ETJ versus when something is annexed. And just, if you wouldn't mind to restate the types of things that could, that land could be used for if it was not annexed into the city?
So basically, by not being annexed, the county and the ETJ does not have any land use requirement. So it can be developed for any purpose, industrial, commercial, residential, any of those. As opposed to want to annex and it requests a certain zoning category, it's restricted to the only uses allowed in our zoning code. So it'll be a little more restricted and more controlled as far as what can be developed on the site. And the other aspect of being in the ETJ is it definitely doesn't have water sewer service, so it's restricted to well or septic, which limits the amount of density that they can put on the property.
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, any other questions or discussion about the motion? Okay, if there are none, we will vote. Those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, I see five hands, so that item will pass with a 5-0 vote. Moving on to item 3K, which is to consider a resolution on the Articles of Incorporation of the Convention Investors Bureau. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We've been talking for a number of weeks and working for longer than that to execute the process of transforming the CVC into a standalone entity that would be referred to as the Convention Investors Bureau. So transitioning from the Convention Investors Council to the Convention Investors Bureau, which is a standard for how these organizations are referred to. The, there are a number of steps that we need to take, this being one of them. And to walk through the presentation and answer any questions council has, I'm going to give it to Assistant City Manager Floyd Hartman, who's been project lead on this. Floyd?
Thank you, Jared. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to present this. Also, we have on board today Ashen Smith for any questions that you might have. But quickly, this is just a continuation of our plan that was presented last week. This goes, the Articles of Incorporation will create the CBB as we are, our goal is and objective is. It will be an independent governing board rather than advisory board. I think we, all the positions will be appointed later this, if this is approved, then all the positions will be appointed by the council September 22nd. After that initial appointment, all will be three-year terms, and that will be staggered. So the appointments that are made later will all expire as indicated on the screen. There will be two ex officio under these articles. This is, this, these articles are put together based off stakeholder input. With that, I'll let Cash, if you have any question for Cashin or myself, we'd be glad to answer them. And we'll show you the next steps on the screen. So this just gets us to that next step.
Council questions for Floyd?
Floyd, can you remind us how many individuals are on that board now? You're, so the recommendation is to go to nine voting members and two ex officio. And so how does that compare to the current makeup?
Ashen, you want to, you want to cover that one?
Sure. Right now, we have, hello? Right now, we have 17 board members, all voting members.
So it's a reduction?
It is. And I know that ours, we're proposing a little bit bigger board than most of the governing boards that you see across the city, but we felt like we have a number of different types of partners that really are vested in what we do in the office. So we wanted to represent those different types of partners.
Okay.
So I saw on there that there's not a ex officio member, like, from city council? Is that correct?
There's actually a position on the board of the voting member for city council. So there's one seat that actually votes. The two ex officio positions would be the manager of the civic center. So at that time, Sherman Bass would be right now, and then Beth Duke, so the executive director of Center City.
Okay.
I'm glad you clarified that, Eddie. We want to make that very clear. Any other questions while Floyd's on the line and Cashin too, Council?
In our previous conversations on those nine, we had talked about possibly having those actually written in the Articles of Incorporation about the industries those came from. Did that end up staying in that, or are you just leaving that more of an open?
In the articles, there are three positions for a hotel. There are two tourism partners, so that would most likely be filled by attractions most of the time. And then there are three positions for at-large citizens, which we had discussed doing a, like, a state certified positions for professionals. But once we had some discussion on that, we didn't want to limit marketing and communication professionals. So we left that at three positions instead of one position for an interested citizen and two for professional.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, then. If there's no further questions, I think we can entertain a motion unless, let's entertain a motion, then if there's more discussion, Council, we can do that.
Okay, Mayor, I move to approve the, for the Articles of Incorporation of the Convention and Visitors Bureau as stated in the articles themselves.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve the Articles of Incorporation for the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Do we have any further discussion or questions about it from the council?
So Mayor, this is stating, I'm not saying it now, but that these appointments would be made by September the 22nd and possibly starting October 1st. Can we kind of talk about, I mean, that's coming up pretty quickly, if those nine are going to be limited to selecting from individuals who are currently serving? Or if that is going to be just an open appointment slate?
Mr. City Manager?
We have already begun the process of soliciting applications, applicants for the board. We have some of our existing board members that have already submitted applications. We've also received applications from people who do not currently serve on the board. So council will be making those, and Floyd, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe on September 22nd. This will be a unique standalone in that later in either early November or early December, council will be making appointments to all of the other boards and commissions. And after this appointment, all future appointments to the Convention Investors Bureau will be done at the same time in that November, December timeframe. But this, on the 22nd, you would be making appointments, picking from among people who have applied to be on the board.
Great, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, at this time, then, let's go ahead and move into a vote on the motion. All of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. I see five. That's a 5-0 vote in favor. Motion passes. Okay, and I will say again to the staff, especially Jared, I'll say it to you, and you can pass it along, how much we appreciate the work that's been done. It's been done in a very short timeframe. But to Cashin, thank you. Cashin to Floyd, and to everyone else who worked on this, to get this set up by October 1st, which is our fiscal year beginning, so that at the beginning of the next fiscal year, this new organization is up and ready to roll. So y'all have covered a lot of miles to get that done in the midst of some other challenging times, doing it during budget session, doing it under COVID regulations, all of that. All that to say, you've done a fantastic job moving this, and we really appreciate it.
I'll pass it on.
Item 3L is to consider the award for Thompson Park replacement pool. Jared?
Yeah, we've got Michael Kishuba, Director of Parks and Recreation, to present the item. Wanted to touch on one of the financing questions that was asked of council. The $8 million that, for Thompson Park Pool, because we were needing to get into design very quickly, we have already issued that debt. Now, we're not, we can pay that debt off early, and we will have the capacity to pay some of it off early. Would never suggest that we carry for the full duration of that debt issuance more money than what we are required to do for the project, or that we need for the project. So I just wanted to put that out there for council, and you'll have those options in front of you at some point in the future. And Laura...
Jared, just to clarify that, I think there may be the question that didn't get answered, or asked even, is, so would we take that extra tax rate and put it towards something that wasn't Thompson Park? And just leave it on the taxpayers? And I think the answer to that is clearly no, but I just want to hear you say it.
Yeah, no, we would not propose to do that.
You'll just pay it off early?
Well, pay it off and adjust...
Say that again for me, Jared, adjust the tax rate back down, is that what you said?
Pay it off, adjust the tax rate when possible.
Yeah. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, ma'am. So Michael, take it away.
Mayor and Council, Michael Kishuba, Director of Parks and Recreation. Excited to bring the award of a construction contract for the new Thompson Pool. One minor note, the number that we're going to be requesting is $6,218,200. The $150,000 contingency was built into the base proposal, so we will not be asking for that extra $150,000. So just a point of clarification, we'll be asking for that $6,218,200. So the pool itself, obviously, is going to be, let me go back to the site plan. There'll be a large zero-edge entry pool with a lazy river, slides, concession and restroom building, pump house, new parking lot, sidewalks, landscape and irrigation. So the amount we're going to be looking at, and here's kind of a slide summarizing it, we're going to be asking for award of the base proposal plus alternates 1 through 6. Alternate 7, we are not including in this award. And so the total amount to Wiley Hicks Jr. would be $6,218,200. That contingency at the bottom, we would not be requesting at this time. As it relates to the overall project of $8 million, I wanted to be able to answer that question. Obviously, there are some design costs that are factored into that $8 million. Some of the other items that are included in the project but not as a part of this construction contract are going to be things like demolition of the old structure. Some of the FFNE, things like the lifeguard chairs, lounge chairs, tubes, things that would obviously help furnish the facility. Construction testing materials, those are things that we would cover separately from this contract, and also things like our IT costs. One of the other items that was removed due to concerns about the project budget due to some opinions of probable cost, we actually had removed the event space, which was something we felt was an integral part of this. We are working with our consultant to work on those designs so we can include those back into this project or as a separate project to add that event space back in. A couple of renderings, just so you can see what we're looking at. This would be a view of the front of the building, the ticket building, concessions, and restroom. This is what the zero-edge pool would look like, the large pool with all the cabanas and outdoor structures. And then the last picture is a picture of what the lazy river could look like. So with that, we have, will be asking council to award the construction contracts for Wiley Hicks Jr. in the amount of $6,218,200. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So Michael, there's one thing that I would like to say about that is, I would hope that you all would still seriously consider moving forward with the event space, just based upon the fact that you've already said that the lake house is becoming really a questionable event space, and it's been used a lot. is becoming really a questionable event space and it's been used a lot. And I would sure hate to see us not be able to take advantage of having that considering the the location towards where the lake house is, the view from being able to see the lake and and the availability, maybe even the higher possibility of it being rented and used in the future. So I still think that that is an integral part of what this project also should. The scope of it, which was originally part of our scope to some degree. So I would still like to see that being pursued.
Michael, on the image we're looking at, where would the event space be located? And were you saying you were trying to get that expense space included under our current budget? Or if not, what would be the projected cost separately?
Yes, ma'am. So looking at this site plan, you can see the buildings there kind of on the bottom of the page. There's a number eight off to the right with a kind of a dashed area. That is where the proposed event space would be. It would be a combination of indoor space and outdoor space. So you could have indoor, outdoor events where you're going back and forth between the facilities. We do plan on including that potentially as a part of the overall project budget. The question becomes whether does it get folded into this project or whether it's a standalone project by itself? So we would be looking to build that as a part of this project budget. And our consultant is currently working on those architectural drawings right now. We should have them in the next week or so, and then from there we'll have conversations about how did this get built?
Is it a timing issue, Michael, as to why you're moving forward with the part you are ready to issue a contract on?
Yes, ma'am. So we ended up pulling the event space just because of budget concerns. When we realized that we could probably get it within the project budget, we were a little bit further behind. So we've asked them to speed up the architectural drawing so that we can award it as quickly as possible.
Michael, I know another question that had been raised before was just on the shade. And I think one of the previous presentations had removed that is are the things we're seeing now some additions? Because it seems to have some pretty nice shade added in.
So one of the things we looked at was adding those shade cabanas. So you can see in this rendering, they're purple and red. On the previous rendering, they're green and yellow. That doesn't mean that's going to be the final color choice. But that's just kind of a rendering of what it could look like. So we've got 12 of those cabanas. We've got the pavilion, which you can see kind of on the right of this rendering here. Also included as an alternate is going to be some of the landscape enhancements, which would include things like some trees and some additional shade. So we feel like we've added a lot more shade than what we had previously included.
I'm very glad to see that added back in. That looks, that looks great and I think it is going to be very needed.
Other comments, questions, counsel?
Comment on the, does this include the demolition of the old Thompson Park Pool?
The construction award that we're asking today does not include that. We've got it earmarked as a separate project budget. So it's included in the $8 million. We just wanted to have a little bit of reserves in case obviously project costs exceeded what we had anticipated. So we've got a separate line item in the project budget that will address that demolition.
But we pretty much expect to spend all $8 million is what I'm hearing you say. Give or take a little bit. You've set some margins. So if if at the end you didn't need those margins, there might be a little left over.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
But the margins are there to make sure we don't overspend, which is absolutely what we don't want to do.
That is correct. We're trying to give ourselves enough buffer to make sure the project's done within the budget that was allotted.
And when would construction begin under this contract?
So obviously, working with purchasing, the contractor will have to provide insurance and bonds. As soon as they do that, we give them a notice to proceed and we start construction. The contractor Wiley Hicks Jr. Has indicated it's 230 days, which will put us either depending on when the notice to proceed is issued, probably early May, late April. So it'll be right in time for the ribbon cutting and the opening of Memorial Day 2021.
Yeah, I'm hoping we have a wide open city by that point in time.
Me too.
Any other questions for Michael on this? Michael, I would just say, thank you for all the work that your team is doing. I recognize that this is over and above all the other things y'all are doing. This is a very important project for our city, a one-time project once every 80 something years. So we appreciate that you do have it focused on staying under budget and that you are working very diligently toward the Memorial Day timeline, both of which are pressure points. And I just want to, on behalf of the council, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion then for this item?
Yes, mayor, I move to award the construction contract to construct an aquatic facility in Thompson Park to Wiley Hicks Jr. Incorporated in the amount of $6,218,200 to include a contingency fee of $150,000 and not to exceed 6,300, I'm sorry, $6,368,200.
Second.
It's been moved by council member Powell and seconded by council member Sauer to award the contract on Thompson Park Replacement Pool to Wiley Hicks Jr. Incorporated. Any further?
Mayor, can I make one?
Yes.
So that $6,218,200 does include the 150,000. We had initially thought it was a separate, but if purchasing went back and visited, it's actually included in that base proposal. So the total amount we would be requesting is the $6,218,200, which would include the 150,000 contingency.
So if we have an amended motion?
Yes, I can amend my motion. Thank you for that because the information that I have stipulates differently. So I appreciate that that correction. So yes, I will amend my motion for the total award to Wiley Hicks Jr. Incorporated to be $6,218,200, which includes the $150,000 contingency fee.
Second. Do we have to second that one?
You would have to second the amended motion, yes.
Second.
Before we address that, Michael, I just want to make sure because what we're seeing in our agenda is that the total amount, including the contingency, would be
Yes, ma'am. Purchasing has verified that, which is why we're able to remove that $150,000 from this award.
Okay, so it's the $6,218,200 already includes. It's included, must be in the base proposal number of $5,939,400. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay, thank you for letting us ask more questions about that.
And we will have, as time goes, we will have additional projects associated with or additional contracts associated with this project for y'all to consider, one being potentially demolition, depending on the cost of that demolition, and then also additional components that are removed from this in the interest of expediency. But that we are still working on on getting the land and estimates on as well. So potential could come before you as well as as part of this project. So $6,218,000 will not complete the project. It's just the lion's share of the project.
Right. And mayor, I appreciate that clarification because my agenda did have different information on it. So thank you.
Okay, good. So with that amended motion, which was also seconded by Dr. Sauer, are we done discussing, counsel, or do you have more questions? Finished? Okay. All right, then let's vote on it. All of those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Three, four, five, I see. So that will pass with the five oh vote. Michael, go build us a swimming pool.
Yes, ma'am.
We're excited about that. Okay, item 3M is to consider a purchase of real estate located at 500 South Grant, 621 South Johnson and 707 South Johnson. Mr. City Manager?
All right, thank you, mayor. I'm going to walk through the the primary deal points on this and some of the history on it. Also show you some renderings of what we might do with the property. And then answer any questions council might have. We also have key parts of this team, Andrew Freeman, who has been working with on all of our land acquisitions with us, as well as Jerry Danforth, our facilities, Director of Facilities, because he's been evaluating all of these properties for potential, for possible future uses. Along with Kevin Starbuck, Deputy City Manager, as this project is closely associated with potential Convention Center Civic Center project that will be out for election in November. So as we look at the first slide, the, this basically just tells, let's go ahead and go to the second slide. This will tell us a little bit more about the project. So right here on our second slide, we have images of all of the different properties that we're talking about. This acquisition touches three different city blocks. It's going to provide the opportunity for a significant amount of revitalization in a pretty dilapidated area and vacant area. So the real estate purchase, as mayor said in that first paragraph, consisted of 500 South Grant. It's 31,000 square, 31,500 square foot warehouse facility. Property includes almost one acre. 603 South Johnson, 12,700 square feet. 621 South Johnson, 5,000 square feet. 600 South Grant, 112,500 square feet. And then finally, a vacant lot that's primarily being used for parking right now, 707 South Johnson, just over a half acre. So a total of 161,700 square feet of buildings and almost three and a half acres of land, like I said earlier, located on three separate blocks. We reviewed many different options and locations before working with council to make an offer to the property owner. The initial asking price was $5 million and there was not a lot of room to move on that for the seller. We will also be doing, I want me to go ahead and go to the next slide if we can. The corner you're looking at right there is the southeast corner of the building. So you're sitting at the corner of Grant and 7th Street. Is that correct? 7th Street, Andrew? I believe it is.
Yes, sir.
The main building is being considered for renovations as a primary or potentially as a primary location for a new city hall. As we know, right now, the estimated cost for renovations convert the main building, well, the estimated cost of renovations on this site for a city hall site, now that would not renovate the entire building, just approximately 70,000 70,000 square feet, so that we could move our current operations into that building would be around $12 million. That would make it a total, total project cost of just under $17 million for the total thing. Compared to, if you, if you go down to the very bottom of the slide, current rent, current projected renovations to our existing city hall facility, and these numbers are pretty accurate because we've had significant amount of analysis done on the cost of replacing systems and modifying spaces. It'd be somewhere between 17.1 million at a low and 39.1 million if we change the footprint of the building or added square footage. So depending on the scope of the project, it'd range anywhere from 17.1 million to over 39 million. The Emerald Hardware Site, the main building at the Emerald Hardware Site, we estimate that we could renovate that for around $12 million. That's the best estimate, you know, as we design and as we get into the structural components of the building, that could change that that price somewhat. Don't expect a lot of issues with the structural stability of the building as it is built like a tank. It, there is no settling and it was first operated in 1939. So the building is incredibly well-built. Built in two phases, and you can see from this picture, if you look down the right side of the building, that the cream colored horizontal sections, they change material right at the mid-block. So this is two separate buildings almost put right up next to each other, both of them in excellent condition and very, very strong. While it's not historically registered, we would want to preserve the character of the building, the design elements of the building and work that into a new city hall facility. The roof line would very likely change somewhat if we were to do that as we've made space for a city for a council chamber on the third floor. So let's go to the next slide. Pardon me, I had to work through my computer. The, as I said earlier, the original list price was $5 million. Sales price that that we have a contract on is $4.75 million. We have a feasibility period of 75 days and a closing date of November 30th. So the feasibility period, if we were to, if council was to approve today and if we were to file it tomorrow, the feasibility period would expire on November 18th, giving us another 12 days prior to the closing date. We will do an appraisal and a phase one environmental study during the feasibility period so that, as well as doing additional inspections of the building and getting more into detail on the structural feasibility of the site. The remaining buildings will also be evaluated for additional city office space or city use in addition to parking needs, both now and in the future. Also wanted to give you some looks at some, just some elevations that we have done. These are internal elevations that we have done through internal personnel in Jerry's Facilities Department. So thank them for the good work to put these together. So the very rough renderings, but it does give a good idea, one, of how the facility could look and two, how it fits into the overall Convention Center Civic Center project site. It's not, and I'm not proposing that this would be dependent upon the Civic Center election, and I'm not advocating for it or against it. I do want to differentiate this facility as as needing a successful election in order to go forward because as we've seen, the renovation cost, acquisition and renovation cost of this facility is right about the same as the minimal cost to renovate city hall and modernize city hall, our existing city hall. So it's definitely something that would be worth evaluating as as we go through the feasibility period regardless of what happens with the election. So I've got a lot of data that I can share about current city hall renovation costs and how this would be a at least something for council to consider. But that's all of the information I have on this presentation. I'd love to answer any questions council has on it or utilize any of our team members to answer questions from council.
So Jared, the first thing that I heard or the, one of the things that I felt like was most important was the fact that the the maximum amount that we would be spending to refurbish the building and turn it into city hall is the equivalent of the minimum amount, not the maximum amount the, to refurbish the current city hall.
Correct, correct. What we estimate the cost of renovation and acquisition or acquisition and the estimated cost of renovation is right about exactly the same as the very minimum cost that we would expect to spend on this, on this building, on our current city hall.
So in the event that lets, so what would the additional cost be whenever we demolition the current city hall?
You mean, what would it cost to demolish city hall?
Yeah, after, after this is finished.
The cost of demolition of city hall is estimated right under $1 million. And that cost is currently included in the bond project, project. So we have not included that in the estimation for the renovation of of this site just because we didn't know exactly where that that cost was going to fall, whether it's in a general obligation bond or in a certificate of obligation component of this project.
But so in other words, regardless, this is a good move for us to be making to upgrade our current city hall for a long-term future for city hall to provide all sorts of access because also did you mention something, wasn't there something mentioned about the fact of being able to also have the drive up for utility billing in on this project and it just completely updates and puts the city hall currently into the 21st century?
Yes, there's a significant, and I should have hit on that, but it's a little bit premature for me to get too far into the design components. However, we have bought it or looking at it very much with However, we have bought it, are looking at it, very much with that in mind on the north side of the building. It would require the removal of the thirty-one thousand square foot warehouse for us to be able to use that site as parking and for the drive-through to be able to extend out to that area. But, it would definitely have a significant improvement on our customer service characteristics, the ability for citizens, for fathers and mothers who maybe have young children or something like that, to be able to handle their utility billing interactions while still in the car without having to dismount and bring every, you know, put, get everyone's carriers and supplies and everything and bring it all in. Having, having had those age kids, I know that that's a bit of a, of a, of a military exercise trying to make that work. So yeah, there would be a significant im- improvement in customer service there. We would also be able to address a number of accessibility issues that we currently have with our current City Hall, both in restrooms and in access. So, there's, there's a lot of things that we would be able, you know, better security or security at all, which is something we generally don't typically, or we, we don't have at all here in this building, for the most part. So there's a lot of characteristics that we would be able to address, primary among them, customer service and access.
Yes, those are some of the things that I think we, as we move forward, if, if we choose to go ahead and make this purchase. I think they're, they're so important, because this is actually a standalone, all by itself type of a, of a move by us purchasing this, this set of buildings, is it actually, regardless of whatever happens in November, this moves us forward and does a significant change for the way that the city can handle a lot of different things.
Yes, sir.
Other comments, council, or questions?
Mayor, I wanted to comment on, on this property, and, you know, council is well aware that I am very excited about the possibilities on, on this particular property, and just a quick history on, you know, this is, the Civic Center discussion has been going on for ten years. We've had four needs assessments presented to three different councils. One of those recommendations in the needs assessments did include the purchase of this property, the Amarillo Hardware Building, and actually the demolition and the construction of a new arena, a standalone arena. And, you know, one of the, it's, it was good and bad getting started in looking at this project. The fact that the city did not have any purchases. We did not have any prior land purchases secured to go forward towards the Civic Center renovation or a new arena. And, and so it also, at the same time, gave us a clean slate for the executive committee to be looking at the, the possible locations. And through those conversations, it was unanimous not to be moving the new arena towards the north end, which had we had land already purchased, we would have been committed to that, and gave us an opportunity to look at what's the long-term, what's the, the usage, the flow, the aesthetics of the entire campus. And this current proposal of being able to have a second arena that is attached to our current facility, allowing us the uniqueness of two arenas under one roof, and being able to utilize this building still as a standalone. It, it always grieved me to see part of the plans was to destroy it, and we would be able to preserve this piece of our history that's downtown. It's a historic building, it is, it's, it's a very interesting building, and to see just the rough renovations of possibilities. My personal opinion is that this gives, would give Amarillo an incredibly unique, gorgeous, functional downtown that is above and beyond any of the original vision that we had for the proposals.
One thing I didn't mention there is, we've been working on this acquisition for well over three years, working with the, the property owner, envisioning how this could play into both with and without a Civic Center project. So this has been a very long gestation period for, for, for this property. It is a significant acquisition, both in acreage and in square footage.
And I think it's important to note that we negotiated with at least one other business owner on a separate building, just seeing what our options were there. It was important to us to take an existing building. We thought that was a better use of taxpayer dollars, and there were some cost efficiencies to be gained by refurbishing an existing building versus building a brand-new building. But even, even refurbishing, I think we're still ahead of, I think we've done a really good job in Jerry Danforth, and Jared, you guys are to be commended on a vision for this building. I know that Lubbock, three years ago, started their process for a new City Hall, and they bought an existing building, and they've spent sixty-four million dollars was their budget to refurbish that existing building. So, you know, to, I think our target for acquiring the building and getting it up to speed, of course, they've done the whole building, we're just gonna do a part of it, is more in the twenty-million-dollar range. So, I love that we can grow into this building, and I like that we're bite sizing that growth for our taxpayers. Do what we need now, and then do what we, when we need more later, we'll have done a lot of the foundational work to be able to move into that space. Frida Howard, any comments for questions from y'all?
I'd like to say, I'm in favor of this. I think it would be fantastic. When I look at the potential cost for the existing City Hall, and we're talking about a Civic Center upgrade, it's fifty-one years old, well, the City Hall is slightly older than that. So it's in need of help, is demonstrated by the dollars amount that the City Manager just, just said. So I think this is a, a good situation. It also opens up and makes it, if the public chooses to approve the Civic Center renovation, it provides the opportunity to have the green space downtown. So I think it's a good move.
Yeah, interesting to build on what Mayor Pro Tim Smith was saying. The, our current City Hall actually opened in nineteen sixty-six, which was two years before the Civic Center that we're talking about, renovations on. The other challenge that we have, if we did choose to renovate on our existing site, sinking a lot of money, many millions of dollars into this existing facility, is that it does preempt, or make it very difficult to consider a project like what we have currently considered at any point in the future, because this building is freshly invested in, in, in more money. And that current project, or the current Civic Center project, as it's currently envisioned, requires the removal of this building, so that this, so that the arena can be on a component of the building. But it is important to look, if we are going to, looking at, at needing to invest an appreciable amount of money in a City Hall to do it somewhere where it won't adversely impact future projects that are planned.
Mayor, I just wanted to reiterate that this, this proposal, we actually had built those numbers into the current recommendation on the Civic Center expansion and new arena. And I believe it was built in at the twenty-one million projected estimate. And right now, what we are talking about is a seventeen million projected estimate, including the purchase and renovation.
Good. Well, I just, I think it's important for us to plan these type of projects with room to grow. That's part of what bothers me the most about our existing building. We know we're already filled, we're already full. So when you look at that thirty-nine million dollar number to renovate that building that involves adding additional square footage, I just, makes me love this historic building even more. And it gives us the opportunity to grow, which I think this council is always doing a good job of thinking ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road, what's our city, what do we need to be deciding today that will benefit our city that far down the road? I think that it, it's important also, council, as we have put on the ballot for citizens to consider the renovation expansion and creation of a new, a new thing we've never had before, which would be a Convention Center. It's important for citizens to see what the plan is for City Hall before that election. And so I like that we have finally been able to go under contract, so that we can talk about this openly and disclose to voters what the plan would be, what the dollars associated, and they can begin to see on a map what the vision for the entire project, new City Hall, renovated Civic Center, and the new Convention Center space. I think that's really important. The election is November seventh, and the feasibility period on this contract, which means we can end it without any explanation on November eighteenth. So we'll have a crossover period of eleven days to consider after the election, whatever that result is, whether or not we want to move forward with this part of that plan. I think it's also important to note that the seller had all of these properties listed as one purchase. So, the seller was not interested in a building by building or in breaking off any of those pieces. He owned all of them and wanted them to be sold as a unit. So just because our initial interest was in that Amarillo Hardware Building, the other piece just came with that building, and that was the seller's prerogative. I think council, Mayor Pro Tim Smith already mentioned the park. I think my last point is just citizens thinking about, any of you who've been to a baseball game, sat there with your family members, watched the sun go down, and the stars come out over a beautiful Amarillo sky, and you look back to center field, a little bit into right field, and you see an empty warehouse, which has interesting historical value to our city, but it's not refurbished. And now you can eat your hot dog and drink a beverage, watch our baseball team, and envision a new City Hall back there in a building that is not part of a, someday will be, but actually part of a vision that already is. And so this purchase would give us the opportunity to think about that, watch what happens on November seventh for the outcome of that election, and then as a council, make a decision on what we feel like voters want, as well as what the best future tract is for our city with regard to a new City Hall.
Mayor, one thing I did not go into detail on was funding source for the acquisition. Whether the, we've mentioned the potential bond, or the bond, it's not a potential bond, it's happening, the, the election is. But we've mentioned that because this is tangentially a component of that project, potentially, because it would house, be the location for City Hall. However, the, the ballot language for that is just speaking to the two-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars of general obligation bond that the voters would be voting on. The total project cost is three-hundred-and-nineteen million dollars, and the tax impact that we've been using in our educational material is the tax impact of both the general obligation voter approves part, the two-hundred-and-seventy-five, and added to that, the impact of the certificates of obligation that would, that would need to be issued in order to do the project. And the reason there's G O and C O in one project is because you can't spend City Hall money, or you can't spend G O money on a City Hall that was done for a Civic Center project. You have to break those two things out. So whether the, the election is successful or not, if council was to go forward with the acquisition after the feasibility period, and then close on the acquisition, election is successful or not, the funds for this option would be done through certificates of obligation. So that's, I just wanted to clarify, funding source for how this property would be purchased. That, oh, that was pretty confusing. And so, please feel free to ask me any questions you want, and if you, if you stop me, I'll, I'll, I'll pull Laura on the camera.
Well, I can say this, I am very much in favor of us getting the Civic Center complex complete, but I will tell you this, even in the event that it didn't, I think that this is integral to moving the city forward. And I can tell you right now, before the election, up or down, I'm gonna be very much in favor of us renovating City Hall. After seeing City Hall a little bit more up close over the past three years, there, our city deserves that we move forward and step that up. And I, I can tell you right now, I'm gonna be in for, and very much in favor of us completing the transaction and moving this forward. I think it is, we've been given a great opportunity to move our city forward. And so I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm gonna be for that, even before November the seventh rolls around.
And the City Secretary corrected me, I'm so glad that she did. November third, it's a Tuesday election in November, I forgot, not a Saturday. Anybody else have comments or things you want to talk about before we vote on this last item, item three M? Okay, let's entertain the motion.
All right, Mayor, I move to authorize the City Manager to execute a contract and other necessary documents for the purchase of multiple buildings and land located at 500 South Grant Street, six twenty-one South Johnson Street, and seven oh seven South Johnson Street in downtown Amarillo, in the amount of four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars plus closing cost and other related expenses.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Powell and seconded by Councilmember Smith to approve and authorize the City Manager to execute a contract and the necessary documents to purchase the buildings listed on item three M. Any further discussion or questions about the motion, council? Okay, all of those in favor, please raise your hand. I see five. The motion passes with a five oh vote. Jared, I would just pause to say, you and your staff have done an excellent job working on this for the past three years, and so much of it done quietly. And it's just been a lot of meetings and conversations, a lot of tough questions given by the council, and you guys have weathered them all, went out for more answers, more answers, more answers, until you got to the point where we had a solution, and it's coming out well in advance of the targeted November election. So, good job, well done, and I hope you'll give many pats on the back to the people on your staff that were involved in that.
Good, and if I could, anytime you get a compliment, you need to deflect. I would also thank the council, but also especially Mayor Pro Tim Smith. The amount that I've learned over the last couple of years working on a number of real estate deals from Mayor Pro Tim Smith has been significant. So, his assistance and, and input's been greatly appreciated.
Howard, we do appreciate all of the real estate work you've been giving, without charging a commission. I'll just clarify that for anyone who wants to ask. Howard's not been charging a commission, but just been serving as his position of council member.
Thanks for your compliments.
Okay, anything else then? I think that's gonna bring us to the end of our action item agenda, and what we have left is an executive session. So, council, we've got time for a quick bathroom break. And Mr. City Attorney, if you don't mind reading our dismissal language.
Mayor, before we go into executive session, I just did want to address council, and just due to cold symptoms and a slight fever, I will not be joining you guys downtown. I will be joining you in executive session, but fully intend to be able to be in person next week for the second reading and also for the workshop. Thanks.
Well, thank you for your consideration, and, and just the modeling of where we are, and we appreciate that, and we certainly hope you feel better soon.
Yes, hope you get to feeling better real soon, yes.
Okay, now we're ready, Brian.
Thank you. Pursuit of the Texas Open Meetings Act, closed session. Amarillo City Council was announced on September the eighth, twenty twenty, at two forty-nine PM. Under the following authority, section five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, discuss a purchase, exchange, lease, sell valuable property, public discussion, such would not be in the best interest of the city's bargaining position. Section five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven, discuss commercial financial information received from existing business or business prospect, which the city is negotiating for the location or retention of a facility, or for incentives the city is willing to extend financial information submitted by the saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you all.